Well, first of all, I'm Mayor Ted Schaefer and with me this evening are my council colleagues. I have Councilor Jack Arnold, Councilor Paul Albrecht, Councilor Rudy Stortebum, Councilor Gail Martin, Councilor Val Vandenberg, Councilor Nathan Pahal. And at the staff table, we have Darren Light, our Director of Corporate Services, Paula Cusack, Deputy Corporate Officer, Francis Chung, our Chief Administrative Officer. At the other table, we have Roy Beddell, who's Deputy Director of Development Services and Economic Development, Rick Baumhoff, Director of Engineering, Parks and Environment, and Christine Dom, who is the Recreation Supervisor for Culture and Community Services. So, the first item we have today is a public hearing. Yes, it's lengthy, but it has to be read. This public hearing is being convened pursuant to Section 464 of the Local Government Act in order to consider the following proposals. Bylaw 3019, that's a zoning amendment and development permit, DP 05-17. This is to amend the zoning bylaw 1996, number 2100, to rezone the property at 19942 Brighton Crescent from RM1 multi-residential low-density zone to RM3 multi-residential high-density zone to accommodate a four-story, 54-unit condominium apartment development. And the next one is for bylaw number 3012, zoning amendment. This purpose to a zone is to amend the zoning bylaw 1996, number 2100, to give the land adjacent to 20416 Park Avenue a zoning designation of C1 downtown commercial zone. The land was formerly part of a lane and presently has no zoning designation. At this public hearing, the public will be allowed to make representations to council and all persons present who believe that their interest in property is affected by the proposed bylaws and development permit shall be given a reasonable opportunity to be heard or to present written submissions representing matters concerned in the amendment. Those of you who wish to speak concerning the proposed bylaws and development permit, commence your comments to council by clearly stating your name and address, then you may give us the benefit of your views concerning the amendments. Members of council may, if they wish, ask questions of you following your presentation. However, the main function of council members this evening is to listen to the views of the public. It is not the function of council at this public hearing to debate the merits of the proposed bylaw and development permit with individual citizens. Everyone shall be given a reasonable opportunity to be heard at this meeting. No one will or should feel discouraged or prevented from making his or her views heard. Any person who wishes to present a written submission to council may do so. Although submissions will be retained by the corporate officer and copies of the submissions will be available from her on request following the hearing. And now, I'd like to ask the corporate officer to let us know how this was advertised.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Notices were sent to owners and occupiers within 100 meters of the subject properties and advertisements were placed in the April 27th and May 4th issues of the Langley advance. We haven't received any correspondence on either bylaw.
Thank you. So, on bylaw 3019, a zoning amendment to rezone the property at 19942 Brighton Crescent from RM1 multi-residential to RM3 multi-residential. I'd like to now invite Wes Friesen from Points West Architecture to present the proposed development. And you're up to bat, Wes.
Thank you. I'm Wes from Points West. This is my colleague, Thomas from M2 Landscape. We're bringing you tonight our proposal on Brighton Crescent. Neighborhood meeting was held on March 31st. We had a good turnout of our neighbors and some open discussions with them. The majority of them supported our proposal and they appreciated the quality of the building and the landscape design. This is our colored view of the streetscape when this building is complete. It's a four-story apartment building. On top of the parcade podium, we have fairly good soil conditions here. Our main floor is only about a meter above grade. Often, we have to go up to two, so this has a better relationship to the street than some of our other proposals. This is the site plan. You see Brighton Crescent to the north, Baldy Creek to the south. We are proposing 54 units. The allowable density on the site would be 90 units, so we're well below that. And that's mostly because of the fisheries area that's going to be retained in the back. So, we'll have a lovely greenscape, green strip in the back, and we're orienting a lot of our outdoor amenity to enjoy that view. This is our underground parcade. All of the parking is below grade, so no stalls are visible from above, which again will enhance the landscape in the neighborhood. There is a separate security fence and gate between the visitor and the resident stalls for that purpose. This is our first floor plan. Fronting towards the street, you'll see the entrance vestibule, and there's a lobby and lounge over 700 square feet, and then also a meeting room over 700 square feet. And these combine to meet our amenity requirement under the bylaw. The second floor, similar, except there's units above and the same as we go up. Third and fourth. This shows you some of the unit plans. We have a range of sizes that are too small for me to read on the screen, so I'm going to refer to my drawing. We have units up to 1,100 square feet and starting at 450 square feet, so a good mix of what will be reasonably affordable units. And there's the six basic types, A to F. Here are the elevations, the bottom one being the north. That's the one fronting the street. You see the prominent two-story entry that will invite you into the building. And we have high gables on the top floor that bring the light into those units. On the east elevation, you can see the grade stays quite level to the back. Starts to fall towards the creek. We're a little higher out of the ground at the back. The south elevation is the one fronts the creek, so it's well above grade. We'll have a nice view, but no access to the creek because we want to protect the fishery setback. The west elevation shows the natural grade that we'll be keeping along our neighbor's property, which quite closely follows the slope of the driveway to the parcade. So, it's a very good relationship there with the grading. And that brings us to our landscape plan with many features that my friend, Thomas, will highlight for you.
Thank you, Wes. Thomas Kyle from M2 Landscape Architecture. From the north side by Brighton Crescent, what we've tried to do is create the sense of neighborhood. And the entry sequence with those four trees will be lovely flowering trees in the springtime, and they'll have very nice fall color in the autumn. So, the idea is to very gently bring you into the front entry sequence. And being on the north side, it's also quite shady. So, we took that opportunity to make it into sort of, we call it the nature walk. And we're introducing indigenous plant material in the north section. And as we go from the north around the nature walk towards the east, there'll be nice areas for sitting down and for relaxation. And we also have the dog park. The dog park will have various apparatus for the dogs to flow on. It'll be artificial turf. Everything is on slab, so we have to drain things that way. But each section sort of has its own vestibule and a courtyard. So, we're trying to create spaces amongst spaces to kind of move with the architectural rhythm. And then, as you go south, we go into the toddler area. And rather than doing the traditional swing sets, we're trying to create natural play for the toddlers. So, we're creating mounds for them to roll down and to run up and to play tag and to run around. And there's also the trees and that sort of thing for parents and whatnot to sit under. And then, you continue through, which is the vegetable garden area. But there's also one vestibule there on the bottom southeast corner where we will have a trellis and a bench seating area to look into the whole vegetable garden. So, the idea is to have a sightline all the way up and down, but you go through courtyard, through courtyard, through courtyard, each one having an important amenity, each one having lots of trees and lots of green. And then, inside the vegetable garden, there's even a water feature there. So, if you're not growing vegetables, if you're not doing anything like that, which we certainly encourage everybody to do, we're hoping that that courtyard is beautiful all the time and so that you can sit. And that's a south-facing area, so you've got lots of sun. We encourage people just to walk around their beautiful garden. Now, as we go to the western, southwestern corner, we see lots of trees. And those trees will get fairly large, beautiful autumn color, and we're combining our trees with both evergreen and deciduous, so we get a very strong combination of the two. So, the primary goals here are to maximize the space that we have for the most number of activities that we can, giving it as green as we can, and then have appropriate spaces that you feel you're in courtyards that are in rhythm with the architecture and with the context of the community.
Thank you. So, she wrote from your end?
Yes.
Alrighty. And now, I'd like to invite those in attendance who deem their interest in the property affected to present their comments to council. And I'd like to ask the corporate officer if there's anybody on the list.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, Tony Taylor.
Hello there.
My name's Tony Taylor. I live at 199-5460, 199A Street. And I'd just like to say a few vocal points about all this redevelopment that's been going on. Our life has been disrupted for over three years with constant construction, whether it is paving at 200, not once, not twice, but three different times. And all of a sudden, they can't find anywhere to park, so they've got to use this small dead-end side street in front of my house where the last council meeting for the development that was for the high-rise at Brighton and 200th Street, my wife was told when she was here, I was out of town working, she said, "Oh, no, your parking and everything else, they were going to work with us and everything else, and it'd all be fine." Well, since that development came in, my wife's been picking up nothing but garbage and trash from all the contractors that not only park in front of our house and block us because we have four vehicles, not only block us from parking in front of our own house because we had to put security cameras up because the neighborhood's got that bad, but she's got to spend the day after when she gets home from work cleaning up all the garbage that they've tossed out of their vehicles from their lunches and everything else and them showing up early before 7:00. And so, I know we can't work till 7:00, so let's just stand out and lollygag and talk and everything else and disrupt people that are trying to get some sleep. Whether we're working nights or days, we weren't getting it. There was so much problems with the city not backing us on that last development. We've got over 30-foot hedges as a buffer zone between us and the property that was built. And I went to the city and everything else, and the developer just hacked them. So, now, we've got over half of 30-foot hedges that are dead. On whose dime? Oh, the city promised it, the developer promised, "Oh, we're not going to cause it." Well, I got videos and I got pictures of all the destruction around our place. I've got all that documented. And I've gone to the city and I said, "Who's going to be on the hook for these things?" And then, "Oh, this was brought up." Well, "We're putting in a new fence and this and that, so we'll just remove the hedges. These are 30-foot hedges that give us some privacy." What right do they say, "Oh, we'll just take them out for you"? No. Would you want, any of you guys want that at your house? Somebody goes, "Oh, we're just, we're going to get rid of those trees for you." Like, would you or would you not be a little upset? Right? And now, this new development is coming in. Okay, the Yale Manor, it was basically for retired and handicap people that were in there. Okay, you get rid of them. They were on low income and everything else. All right, now, what do they got living in there? Excuse my language, but it's guaranteed it's nothing but hookers, crackheads, and thieves that are occupying that building right now. If you go to the RCMP and see how many times they've been called, you call the ambulance, how many times they've been there for overdoses? And the vice squad's been watching the place, okay? And here, you're trying to rezone a place, then you're calling it low income. Well, there's no such thing to you guys as low income. Maybe $80,000 a year you make. "Oh, okay, well, I can afford $2,000 a month for a little apartment." And, "Oh, I'll just get rid of my pet," because you can't have pets. I think that is very disheartening and very cold-hearted for you not to consider and at least give the people that live there and have lived there for years, "All right, you're going to rezone, but don't do back-to-back-to-back-to-back-to-back because all you're going to do is make enemies." Like, I've done my homework, and I can come up with eight pieces of equipment that are licensed for the road and say, "I know your address," or "I know your address," or "I know your address." I can go park them on the street in front of your house, and I'll come fire them up whenever I want. You wouldn't want it, would you? So, why should I have to go through that? It's just, I don't think it's fair, and I have no faith in the development because I've complained to City Hall. I've done everything. I was all sweet and fine with the developer because he said, "Okay, this, that, and everything else." He promised me the moon. He did absolutely nothing. He never followed through. It was a single thing, ruined my property. And now, who's to say it's not going to happen again? Like, this developer here got rid of old people. It was a quiet neighborhood. Sure, it was a rundown place, but it gets an elderly person in place that they could go home. Now, what do you do? You turn around, "Okay, let's just have every crackhead and whore live in the place." Because that is what it is. And you can't say that I'm making this up because you go to the police and you ask for an ambulance. They will back me on that. They've been watching that property ever since they got rid of them. It was not even, not even a week after they kicked the old people out that they had these people in there. And I'm just saying, there is so many infractions, and this proposal goes through. I know my WCB in and out, and that other place was a miracle, and they didn't go through so many fines. But I'm telling you, this goes through, any infraction, I will be videotaping it and send it to WCB, and they can go after them. And all I got to say is, I do not think that you guys are playing fair. And I've gone, this development meeting that they're talking about, a community meeting? Never heard of it. Guy across the street from me, I could call him right now. He never heard of it. He lives right on Brighton Crescent, just a few doors down. Never heard of it, no notices about this meeting, so automatically right there, I'm calling a lie. Like, who showed up at the meeting, the one next-door neighbor? No. Because like, my wife, me, nothing. There was no notice. We've received your guys' notices. We never got nothing about no community meeting, ever. So, right there, you started off in my bad books with bold-faced lying to me. And I'm just saying, if I have to go through the same thing with this development, and I've got construction vehicles parked in front of my house and everything else, I will, I'll take my construction vehicles and I'll find a place to park them. And when I need them, I'll go get them, and I'll just park them because they're licensed to be on the road. And apparently, anybody with a bulldozer or anything, they can go park on the road, while I can go park my heavy-duty equipment in front of your guys' place. I don't mean to say that you guys have never met me or seen me or heard from me, but I'm just saying you're dealing with somebody that's really hurt and really upset, and it's really hard to keep my cool right now. Like, I'm doing my best to be calm, and this is about as calm as I can be. But I just, I lost faith in Gary, the developer. He asked to run water over to that condo. And I said, "Yeah, well, for what?" He goes, "Oh, just to wash her boots and this and that to go in and out of the office trailer." I did that for two months for him, just before Christmas. He goes and drops an envelope in my mailbox with $20 in it for running water over to his job site because he didn't have water on the site. So, like, developers, I don't know. And I'm a construction worker. I work for developers. And I don't know, sometimes I just got to bite my tongue at work, right? But I try, I try to be compassionate at my job to the surroundings. I try to work, please everybody, and happy neighbors is a good neighbor, right? And I'm just telling you right now, this isn't a happy neighbor. And 3/4 of the people on my street, they couldn't be bothered to come down here, but they're 100% behind me. About 3/4 of the people on the neighborhood, my wife and me have been talking with, like, we're a fairly close neighborhood there. But now, this has came through, and I was the only one that had the gum to stand up and speak my piece. There's a million things I could say, but I don't want to keep you all late. Thank you.
Well, we appreciate the concerns and the information that you've given to us. You know, we do not appreciate and do not want the development industry to upset, to be upsetting the neighborhood. And if we hear that they're out there before 7:00 in the morning or disrupting the neighborhood in any way, shape, or manner, or causing an untold amount of litter or garbage to be around, that will not be tolerated from this council. So, our administrator has taken note of this and will pass this on to staff, and we will deal with it at our end, his end. And we're very sorry to hear that there were issues there. I don't think anybody from this council has heard of any of those issues that you had. So, from our pers-
It's like not, like, howling away with destroying 30-foot hedges.
So, we have, we haven't heard. We had no idea. And not-
A lot of our pictures.
Yeah, no, we, you know, we believe you with your photos and your concerns, and we're going to be looking into that. So, again, our administrator will be looking at it, and staff will be monitoring the situation there. And Wes is right here to pass it right on to the owner. And I don't think Wes knows this council well enough. Thank you. Further speakers? Okay, the next one is on bylaw 3012, zoning amendment bylaw to give the land adjacent to 20416 Park Avenue a zoning designation C1 downtown commercial zone. And corporate officer, are there any speakers on the list on this one?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. I now need a motion to close the public hearing. Councilor Martin, Councilor Vandenberg, all those in favor, unanimous. Council now commence into committee of the whole, which provides council the opportunity to hear input from the public and allows council great opportunity to speak and debate specific agenda items. That council commence committee of the whole. Councilor Albrecht, Councilor Arnold, all those in favor? Opposed, everybody's in favor? This is to deal with the financial plan amendment. Darren Light, our Director of Corporate Services, please present your presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, at our last council meeting, I presented the annual financial statements to council, which you approved. And part of that process is to amend our bylaw in order to match the expenditures that were in our actual financial statements to what is in the budget. So, we had a few items in our financial plan that we went over on in our fire service, development services relating to the hotel tax, recreation, and we transferred more money to the reserves. So, we need a budget amendment to authorize those expenditures.
And corporate officer, any correspondence received?
No correspondence, no one on the speakers list.
Thank you. Any comments from the gallery? None? I need the motion to committee of the whole, rise and report. Councilor Pahal, Councilor Martin, all those in favor, unanimous. So, the next item we have is the adoption of the agenda that the May 8th, which is today, 2017 agenda be adopted as circulator. Councilor Vandenberg, Councilor Pahal, all those in favor? Against, it's unanimous for. Adoption of the minutes of the regular meeting held on April 24, 2017 be adopted as circulator. Councilor Vandenberg, Councilor Pahal. All those in favor? Unanimous for. And the minutes of the public hearing held on April 24, 2017 be adopted as circulator. Councilor Vandenberg, Councilor Pahal. Now, I've got you guys caught up. All those in favor? It's great. Okay, now, it's the business part of bylaw 3019, zoning amendment bylaw 19942 Brighton Crescent. The motion is third reading of the bylaw cited as zoning bylaw 1996, number 2100, amendment number 1362017, number 3019. I need a move in a second. Councilor Martin, Councilor Stortebum. Discussion. Councilor Vandenberg.
Three questions, one's a two-parter. How were the notices distributed to the neighborhood? And who attended the information session? Was it owners or renters?
Mr. Beddell?
Mr. Mayor, the applicant handled the notices on the public information meeting. However, I believe they contacted the same properties as we would with a public hearing notice, so within a 100-meter radius.
Okay.
The invitations for the neighborhood meeting were mailed. We got the mailing list from the city based on the 100-meter radius. And the people that attended filled out comment sheets, and we can put those into the public record.
Thank you. My last question is to the gardener. Sorry, I forget your name, the landscaper.
I'm Thomas.
Thomas. Love the design, love the flow. I think it's a great idea. I just had a few questions in regards to indigenous plants. Are you talking ferns, salal, hostas, that sort of thing?
Exactly.
Okay, great. I know you talked about spring and fall. Are you considering putting in some winter heather or something to have some color during the wintertime as well, or just asking?
No, it's a wonderful idea. And obviously, you know your plants, which is terrific.
Wes, use the mic. Wes, use the mic.
You, you know your plants, which is lovely. I actually don't have my plant list in front of me, but the whole intention was that we would have spring color, fall color, and winter color. And sometimes I can just be on the berries. I can send you the plant list, if you like. I think there are many different perennials, like heathers and lavenders and all that sort of thing. But I'm very happy to send you the, the plant list, if you like.
Counselor Pahal.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just have four questions. The first question, and could be to staff, I know we've had other applicants come up with contractor parking plans for some other projects that we've done in our community, is it's foreseen as a possibility here to mitigate any of the challenges that we've heard from other projects, and as the person in the audience noted?
I don't have the answer to that, I would have to ask our chief building inspector on that, and I can provide that to council after.
Thank you. The next question, just for clarity, there is no surface parking, and this is all underground?
Correct.
Great. Is this a strata-for-sale building?
It is a strata building.
Okay.
Yes.
Thank you. And just the final question, and I'm sure this is part of it, the new environmental-sensitive area, does this encroach on that in any way?
We have had a consultant prepare the plan, and it's been submitted to the Ministry of Environment.
Okay.
That's it?
Yeah.
I have Counselor Albrecht, and then Counselor Martin.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I sit on the Advisory Planning Commission, and it was reviewed and approved unanimously, and with favor. I believe there's a number of adaptable housing units, I can't remember the exact number here, I don't have it with me at the moment, provisions for electrical vehicles and bicycle parking. So, it's, it's meeting all our criteria in the parking requirements as well. I do want to thank Tony for coming forward, I appreciate hearing that feedback in the neighborhood, and I'm sure that staff will be looking at that. And I'm, I really want to stress to Wes, to go back to your owner and the developer, and live up to the promises made, make sure you have good contact in that neighborhood. I think as a council, we'll take under advisement the, the timing of some of these. We're market-driven to a large extent, so, and we have an OCP that we're trying to follow, and, and build our community, and, and try to provide housing options. And they're not for everybody, of course, but at the same time, by providing a variety, providing a diversity, and providing more, we're hoping that that will affect the affordability of housing somewhere down the line. We're a little behind the game at this point, but I think it's something that we're working to, to try to address. So, again, thank you, Tony, for bringing your, your points forward, and we will certainly look into things like that, like Counselor Pahal said, a parking plan or strategy to try to mitigate impacts on neighbors. The garbage thing is unacceptable, and there's other things that can be done, it's just a matter of communication, and not being cheap, you know, in, in some regards. So, thank you, if you pass those along.
Counselor Martin.
Thank you. Well, I, I echo some of what Counselor Albrecht said, and I'm, I'm hoping that we will get some kind of a report in regards to the comments that were made. It's very, very seldom that, that we hear somebody contacted the city, and they didn't care, or they didn't do anything. I just, you know, so, if, if Mr. Chung was contacted, or somebody, one of his staff were contacted, and nothing was done, I mean, I think we have to, we have to look at that. You know, a parking plan might, might be a good idea. I guess I'd also like to be clarified, perhaps in, in the report, in regards to street parking, you know, whether anybody's allowed to park there, or, or, you know, it's just for the homeowner, or whatever. Because we hear, we hear this complaint quite often in regards to certainly the development that's taking place over in, in that area, along, you know, 198th and what, what have you. So, and, and I know just up the street from me, there's, there's a development going up, and, and the cars are parked basically in front of the development, but they're taking up part of the road. So, you know what's happening, you just kind of live with it. But, you know, in regards to, to the workers parking on the street, I, I just don't know whether they're allowed to, or, or whether it is reserved for the homeowner, or is it public parking, or what? So, I'd like that clarified.
Your worship to Counselor Martin, street parking is street parking, and it is for the public to use, and normally it's used by the property owners that resides adjacent to the on-street parking. But, you know, anybody can park there, there's no restriction, we don't have any restriction of residential parking permit required for those. So, again, it's first come, first served. But normally, we do work with the contractors to ask them to respect the neighbors, don't block the driveways, don't park too close to the driveway, so they can't obstruct them from entering, exiting their, their properties. We will ensure that we give a strong message during the pre-construction meeting to the contractor. And sometimes they do locate empty vacant lots for their contractors, for their workers to park in. So, that's something that we may want to explore with our staff, the contracting developers. But it is a tough situation during any construction development, that parking is at a premium, and we'll try our best to encourage them to respect the neighbor, and look for alternative sites for them to park during the constructions period.
Counselor Stortaboom.
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you for your presentation. I think it's very well thought through, I really like the innovative landscaping, and I can't help but wonder what it's going to look like when it's done. It's, it's very creative, and I like the environmental component associated with it very much. I, I am concerned about how these notices of public meeting were distributed, apparently they were just mailed out. My understanding is that it's intended that they be distributed within a, a certain proximity to the affected property, so I might suggest, as well as mailing them out, they might be delivered by hand as well, in the future, moving forward. The idea being, you know, to get the neighbors to come out and attend. And I can appreciate, too, that parking is a challenge, especially during a time of construction, and some special consideration would be sincerely appreciated. Point West Architecture and all the contractors have done some good business here in the city, and I would suggest that, moving forward, we need to remind you that not only do you have a business contract with the city, but there's an implied social contract with regard to the residents of the city. And so, I'd ask that you make some special consideration to those affected parties, and try to encourage them to appreciate the relationship with the neighbors, and moving forward, we can do small business together.
Great.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. This looks like a very nice development, I like the idea of the corridor going down with the dog park, little, little dog park, playground area, community garden, quiet social resting area, it looks very nice for, from a, you know, from the project's perspective there. One concern I did have with the presentation that the gentleman gave earlier was with white-tailed homes and their, the building, whether it, who they rented out to, rented out to, or who uses it, the clientele that's in there. I hope you could pass this on to them to address possible concerns that they have at that city has, the residents have at that facility.
Yeah, certainly, I'll pass it on. I believe those tenants were in place before our client took possession of the property.
Yeah. You know, when you move, you know, this is a, a hot-market area right now, the houses are going three at a crack, being bought up three at a crack. It's unbelievable. I just heard the other day of, you know, somebody came in and bought three right on the spot, bang, bang, bang. So, it, as my colleagues have said, it's a hot-market area, so then there will be a lot of activity going on there. So, thank you for your presentation, and I need to have a vote, all those in favor, against, it's unanimous for, so. Next one is the zoning bylaw 3021, and that is the amendment adjacent to 20416 Park Avenue. I need a mover and a second, Counselor Stortaboom, Counselor Albrecht. Discussion, all those in favor, against, it's unanimous for. Business Rising from the Committee of the Whole, this is bylaw 3022, a financial plan amendment. Final reading of the bylaw cited as the financial plan 2016, 2020, bylaw 2016, number 2980, amendment number 2, bylaw 3022, a mover and a second, Counselor Martin, Counselor Stortaboom. All those in favor? Against, it's unanimous for. The next meeting of council is May 29th, the one after that is June the 12th. Counselor Stortaboom.
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I am happy to report a very well-attended council, council's information meeting at our Langley City Convention Center this past Friday, for representatives from the 21 municipalities, One Treaty First Nation, and one electoral area that make up Metro Vancouver. This semi-annual meeting, as well as the board and brief report for the most recent meetings of Metro Vancouver's Board of Directors, make city council up to date. However, a few notes from the meeting are worth highlighting. First, the board presented preliminary results of the 2017 homeless count in Metro Vancouver, that showed a 30% increase overall, and the number of homeless people counted in Metro Vancouver since the previous count, 2014. As you know, the total number of homeless people in the Langleys has increased significantly from 2014, when it was recorded at 92, up to 206 in just these three short years. However, the Langleys reported a 234% increase in the sheltering of homeless people. This is up from the 38 sheltered homeless people in 2014, to a total of 127 sheltered homeless people this year. As such, the Langleys recorded the largest percentage increase in sheltering homeless people for the region. The full and final report is expected to be released this summer. Second, at this time of election, in the province of British Columbia, Metro Vancouver has prepared a publication called Local Government Matters, to engage the provincial parties by providing information about regional issues, and asking about how the parties would deal with what is important to metro municipalities. Third, Metro Vancouver continues to advocate for substantial changes to the homeowner grant, property transfer tax, and school property tax, to ensure that property taxation is fairer and more equitable for residents and businesses across the region. Also, at the Climate Action Committee, the BC Energy Step Code was introduced as a voluntary tool for local governments to use in order to encourage or even require the construction of more energy-efficient buildings. The proposed step code supports the Building Act by providing a consistent provincial standard for energy efficiency, to replace the wide range of existing policies and programs developed by local governments. At last, a conversation around the air quality permit application process, and specifically the applications from two facilities in the Campbell Heights Industrial Park, have been added to next month's meeting agenda. That is my report.
Thank you, Counselor Stortaboom. Next, we have an engineering update from Mr. Baumhoff.
All right, thank you very much. This is update for May 2017. And hard to believe, but it's that time of year again for lawn-watering restrictions, it starts May 15th. And the restrictions are to the, at the following times. For residential addresses, even-numbered residential addresses, Monday, Wednesday, and Saturday between 4:00 a.m. and 9:00 a.m., and odd-numbered residential addresses, Tuesday, Thursday, Sunday, between 4:00 a.m. and 9:00 a.m. The non-residential addresses are even-numbered non-residential addresses, Monday, Wednesday, between 1:00 a.m. and 6:00 a.m., and Friday between 4:00 a.m. and 9:00 a.m. And the odd-numbered non-residential addresses are Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, Tuesday, Thursday, between 1:00 a.m. and 6:00 a.m., and Friday between 4:00 a.m. and 9:00 a.m. For more information, visit the City of Langley website at city.langley.bc.ca. The 2017 traffic calming status update, 50th Avenue project at Conder Park, the neighborhood ballot passed, open house is scheduled for May 24th, 2017, from 5:30 to 7:30, at Nicklemeckle Elementary School Multipurpose Room. On 198th Street at Brighton Park, neighborhood ballot passed, the open house is scheduled for May 31st, 2017, 5:30 to 7:30, again, at Nicklemeckle Elementary School Multipurpose Room. The Michaud Crescent and 201A Street at Linwood Park, that, the neighborhood ballots passed, the open house date and time is yet to be announced. For more information on the open house dates, times, and locations, again, it's at the city website, city.langley.vc.ca. The 56th Avenue project is now underway, so that's from Glover Road to let the Langley bypass. The anticipated completion is September 30th, 2017. The work is under, underway from Monday to Friday, 7:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m., and the public can expect traffic delays during that, that period. However, single-lane traffic in both directions is maintained at all times, but there will be some stoppages. Pedestrian access is also maintained, and businesses are open during the construction The Penzer Park Action Park construction is well underway, and these are some pictures, the top left is the, the bike pump track, so it's actually a little bit further along than this, this slide shows, they poured some concrete. And the right-top picture is the children's playground rock climbing area, and the bottom picture is the adventure, the challenge course, the adult challenge course. So, it'll be like a parkour, similar, similar to a army kind of challenge course, outdoor park, and it'll be rubberized floor, on the ground in that area. So, it's exciting, and completion is scheduled for, in addition to these pictures, there's a sports, multi-sports box that's being completed, that's not shown here, but that's also part of the project. We anticipate completion by the middle of June, and the grand opening is June 29th at, I've got it later in the slide, I believe it's 11:00 a.m. The Innis Plaza changes is, is also being undertaken. So, this is a, a concrete pony wall that's being constructed right alongside the, the fountain area, and that'll divide the fountain from the area and the pool area that was going to be closed off, and that will be filled in with soil and planted with, with manuals and perennials. The Linwood Park addition is, has been awarded, and that, this is a picture of the playground equipment that will be going in there, so it's geared towards five, mostly five to 12, but there's also some, some younger kids play equipment there. It also has a, a zip line, so that, that will be going in at the park.
Counselor Martin, very pleased.
In current projects, just a list of projects that's underway, the 203 Street Roadwork and Roundabout Project is now open for traffic, as of 4:30 today, and the grand opening is June 9th at 11:00 a.m. The Water Park Expansion at City Park has been awarded, we've met with the contractor on Friday, and we're scheduling when, when things can happen, so there'll be an, an expansion of the existing Water Park area. The Hunter Park redevelopment is out, now out for tenders, and the Portage Picnic Park picnic shelter is, has been awarded today, and will start construction by, and hopefully before the beginning of June. That picnic shelter will be very close to the, the drive, the parking lot area, so there's high visibility, you know, from a SEPTED point of view. The Penzer Park Action Park, I've mentioned, is completion scheduled for mid-June, grand opening is June 29th, sorry, it's 4:00 p.m. is the grand opening event. Newlands Drive, 210th Street, storm sewer installation and water main replacement proj- Newlands Drive, 210th Street, storm sewer installation and water main replacement project is well underway, it's nearing completion. The 56th Avenue Glover Road to Langley Bypass, we saw a picture of that, and 48th Avenue project, 200th Street to 203 Street Roadworks, an addition of bike lanes and sidewalks in that area. Thank you. Are there any questions?
Well, I've got a few here. Councillor Martin, councillor Vandenberg, councillor Pahal.
Oh, thanks. I don't have any questions, I just have a comment. I've lived in the city for 30 years this year, and I have never seen 208, the east side, look so good as it has this past week. They've got rid of all the weeds, trimmed some of the trees, got rid of some of the trees, maybe pruned them a bit, planted grass. It looks absolutely fabulous. And I told Jeff this morning too, so I hope he passes that on to, on to his staff. And I understand, perhaps the neighbors are looking at some kind of a cost-sharing fence for that area, which will greatly improve that. It looks wonderful, so thank you. The other comment I want to make is the signage that's recently been installed on the floodplain.
Right.
It's wonderful, absolutely wonderful. I walked down there the other day, and, I mean, there's different colors, there's sort of white for the entrance and blue on the trail. Big improvement, and again, it's something that we've been waiting a long time for. So, you know, our, we're investing a lot of money into our parks this year, I think over $3 million, and, you know, the park staff, from what I understand, are very excited about everything they're doing, and I think our public is going to be very, very pleased with the results by the end of the year, because a lot of work is being done, and the guys are doing, guys and girls are doing a great job. So please pass that on to your, to your staff, Rick, it's just wonderful.
Absolutely. Thank you very much.
Councillor Vandenberg.
Thanks, Rick. Yeah, I echo councillor Martin's sentiment. It looks fantastic, and it's just going to get better and better and better. And I really think we should be investing in our parks. Other communities have had it for a really long time, and it's been really liking here. And I'm glad that this council has supported that through and through. The works guys and parks, they've been doing a fantastic job, and I've been getting nothing but compliments from people. So thanks to all of you. One question, 48th between 200th and 203rd, do we have a completion date for that? I know people in that area are getting frustrated just with, they've been dealing with a lot of construction in that area, and so I've had a few questions asked about when that will be completed. Do we have a date yet for that?
There is, I don't have it offhand, but I can get that to you.
Wonderful, thank you.
Councillor Pahal.
Thank you very much. Yeah, I think this year I haven't seen as much construction work going on and renewal going on in our community since I moved here over a decade ago. So it's just amazing the amount of work when we sat down and decide to renew our community. One of the things that I've really liked as of late was the change in how we're maintaining accessibility during these construction projects. So I know on 203rd, for example, you ensured that when you were doing the asphalt, that there was little ramps so that people in scooters and mobility aids could get around, ensure there was level gravel so people wouldn't slip. And I'm sure you're going to be carrying that through onto roads like 56th Avenue, and it's truly appreciated by the people who have to use that, and I notice it too. So thank you for maintaining accessibility during these projects.
For sure. And maybe just as a note as well, we did meet with all the businesses along 56 before we started, and there, a number of those kind of comments were raised, and the contractor's very aware of the issues, and so we're trying our best to satisfy and make, you know, go out of our way to ensure people know that businesses are open along that stretch during construction, so we don't want to affect their business, or we might minimize the effect.
Thank you. Further? No, I'd like to echo my colleague's comments on 56. It's a very sensitive area because there are incomes. It's not like a residential street where, you know, people will be disrupted for, you know, a short time, but this is people's livelihoods down there.
Yes.
The other concern I had was, and all of council received, I forwarded an email in front of Simon's Elementary, this 48th Avenue. I had to do a presentation at the school just last week, and I got caught into that traffic snarl in front of a school, which I think is totally unacceptable. If they have to hire more flag people, that's their project. Having flag people at a block apart where they can barely see each other is unacceptable, and I would like to see a city staff person check that out almost on a daily basis, because this is a school. The gentleman that sent us the email's got a six-year-old going to that school, and there's no way this council is going to have something happen to a child in that area. So we would like to have that done, and check that, that area again every single day.
Yeah, we do, we do have an inspector there, but we'll point that out and make sure that.
If the city needs the inspector to sit on the curb in front of that school, it will happen. Thank you. This, as my colleagues have said, we're into a revamping and renewal of the city. There are many areas in the city that are being redone. It's like any other project that's happening, whether it's your home or your car, the city is going through that rebuild. We're doing sewer, water, streets, curbs, gutters, and in parks, so we're into quite a rebuild, and it's time that the city has taken the ball and run with it. So I'd like to say thank you to the engineering staff and the park staff for moving forward and doing a great job out there. So thank you very much, Rick.
Thank you.
Now, we have a recreation update. Ms. Dom. Filling in for Ms. Hilton.
Well, we're heading into a very busy special event season, and I just wanted to share a few of the events coming up with you, starting with the Move for Health Day. This Wednesday, May 10th, we're having a variety of free drop-ins at the Tims Community Centre all day long, starting in the gymnasium with pickleball, drop-in badminton, and open gym. We have free weight room access the entire day, starting at 6:00 a.m. until 10:00 at night, and free fitness classes throughout the day. You'll need to check the city website or pick up a schedule of events for those classes. This Friday, May 12th, is the opening of the Al Anderson Memorial Pool. Again, starting at 6:00 a.m., the community can join us for early bird link swims. We've got the grade five swim program, an after-school public swim, as well as late-night swim. And Bike to Work Week is on May 31st this week, or sorry, this month. We will be having staff at the corner of 203rd and 56th Avenue, and if you stop in with your bike, you can get some snacks and enter to win some prizes on that day.
You can walk there, Nathan.
And on Saturday, June 3rd, we're having the Food Truck Festival. It's our second annual. It'll be held at Douglas Park from 11:00 a.m. until 5:00 p.m. It's a free event, and we'll have entertainment, there's a market, live music, and lots of family activities at the park. Sunday, June 11th, is our 17th Annual Triathlon. Registration is open until June 4th. We have the youth, adult, classic, and relay team divisions with still some spaces available. If you're not into racing this year, we are looking for volunteers to help out with course marshalling, as well as timing and registration. And the public's invited to come as spectators. The Langley Flipper Swim Club will be hosting a barbecue. You can get your smokies and hamburgers as early as 10:00 a.m. And as I said, it's going to be a very busy event season. We have our event season guide available now. It's available online. You can pick up a hard copy at any of the rec centers or the Al Anderson Memorial Pool. Few new programs coming up as well. Again, just a reminder that our spring and summer recreation guide is now available. It is available online, as well as the Tims Community Centre, Douglas Rec Center, and the Al Anderson Memorial Pool. On Wednesday, May 10th, as part of the Move for Health Day, we're having a free zumba family dance party. This is to, a free trial class, as we're going to offer a new program starting on Saturdays where the whole family can come out and zumba. A new power yoga class is coming on Wednesdays. This is our first drop-in yoga program, so you do not have to pre-register, get there early to get your spot. This, again, is going to be on Wednesdays from 9:45 till 10:45 at the Tims Community Centre. Chair yoga. This is, again, a new program. It is a registered program, and this one is also on Wednesdays in the afternoon from 3:15 till 4:15. It's open to all levels, you don't have to have any yoga experience, and it's all done either sitting in a chair or using the chair for balance.
Yee-haw.
The city is sponsoring city walks this year. There are two locations that you can come out for these free walks. Douglas Recreation Center, sorry, Douglas Park. Douglas Park meets on Mondays, and on Thursdays at Bryden Park. The walks are from 6:00 till 7:30. There'll be a fitness leader there to lead the walks, and safety in numbers, and come out and enjoy different walks along the trails and in through our parks. And finally, another event or program we're offering is bocce. This will be offered at Tims Community Centre. This one, I think, again, is another Wednesday program. It's a popular day of the week. Wednesday is from 2:45 till 3:45. This is a drop-in program, and we are doing it in coordination with the sportability. So it's open to all levels, it is adapted, and, but it's open to everybody, all ages, and you can just drop in for that. Multi-sport program, another registered program for children six to 12 years old. This is offered at Tims Community Centre, and it is a registered program as well. And finally, our Fantastic Adventure Summer Camp, registration is now open. These camps are week-long camps, starting in July and going all the way through the summer. You can register for a full week or daily. Fridays are out-trip days, so register early for those. We go to the aquarium, the beaches, the Coltes Lake glider slides, everything is included with those. We also have before and after care available, and spots fill up quick. So you want to register online, or you can drop into any of the rec centers for that.
Roy, what a busy calendar.
Hard to get it all in there.
I must say, this little events brochure that you have is excellent. There's stuff happening I didn't even know about in here, and I should, but thank you to the staff who put this together. Is there comments? Councillor Vandenberg.
Thanks for your presentation, Christine. It's nice to see you again. I noticed the city walks. I think that's a fantastic idea. I think it's a really good way to get people in the community out in the nature parks and the trails and stuff. I know a lot of people have been concerned about safety issues in there. I think the more we do of this, the better it'll get, and I'd like to see more of it. So thank you guys for putting that on.
Absolutely. And I should mention, those are rain or shine.
Further? Seeing none. Thank you for a great presentation. Still under the mayor's report, this council and this city hosted the Council of Councils the other week, and this was a hosting of all the mayors and the councillors from the Metro Vancouver area. And it was quite interesting. It was a full morning and lots of new information. Second one we have here is the Fraser Institute just put out their list of the fastest, quickest development cities in the Metro Vancouver area, and this council is very proud, very pleased to say that we were number one. And I would like to thank the engineering staff, the planning staff, the park staff, fire department who get together. And there were some individuals out there that took exception, I'll say cities, took exceptions to us being number one. And, you know, tough. We try hard, we work hard, and it was interesting, one of the headlines I saw someplace was somebody took exception to, to it, instead of us being number one, it was a negative. So it was, instead of a positive headline, it was a negative headline. So I just found that interesting, when the city's doing so well, moving forward. And I have a quote in my office from Christian Chia, who is the president of the Open Auto Group, and we did his development permit, I believe, in 13 or 15 days on the Porsche project. So there are some anomalies, but normally we would do them in two months. And our staff do a great job, and what happens is we get together and we meet with the development industry ahead of time, and that's so important. And this council recognizes that time is money. So if a project takes a year and a half, as in someplace north of the Fraser, that developer's money is tied up, or he has to, you know, adjust his income accordingly. And in the long run, that actually makes some of our projects a little bit cheaper because the financing charges aren't there. So I'd just like to thank the staff again. Roy, you're sitting here. You pass that on to your colleague and to the staff that Oscar, especially Oscar and Bev, Karen, Dale, the gang in there. Thank you. And keep up the great work. You know, we want, number one, two years in a row. Can we, can you guarantee that for us? Come on, come on, buddy. I'll give it. Anyway, thanks again. Next, we have a property development permit number 01-7. That development permit, oh, pardon me, bylaw. I've got all my writing on here, it took up my page. Bylaw 3020, tax rate bylaw, final reading. I need a mover and a seconder. Councillor Martin, councillor Vandenberg, all those in favor? It's unanimous for. The other one was the development permit 01-17 to accommodate the 98-unit condominium apartment located at 53935455, 5457, 201 Street be approved subject to the execution of a development servicing agreement in compliance with the conditions outlined in the Director of Development Services Report. Mover and seconder, councillor Martin, councillor Pahal. All those in favor? Wow. And this happy little evening is pretty much over. We have one spot of correspondence from the Vancouver Humane Society for Meatless Monday Initiative. And do we have any new business, old business, some kind of business? Yes, sir.
Just want to make a couple of comments. We had another successful youth week, and I'm assuming that we'll have a report probably at our next council meeting, kind of a breakdown on that, as well as the Langley Walk was very successful there yesterday as well, so we'll probably have reports on that coming, but I just wanted to mention those.
And weren't you doing some shoveling of some dirt?
Oh, yes, yeah, yeah, we did those planters there at Stafford. Yeah, so we'll give a real report on that from the youth committee, right? Councillor Arnold?
Great. It was great to see council involved with that. It's fun being with the youth. You got dirty. Okay, so I need a motion to adjourn. Councillor Pahal, councillor Vandenberg, all those in favor?